I'm so sorry, can you hang just one second?
Oh, we're not ready? Okay. Now we're good? Okay, once again, good evening, everybody. It is December 2nd, Tuesday night, 5 o'clock PM. This is a workshop on land development regulations. So we're going to call to order our roll call.
Janine Holk here.
Greg Julian.
Melissa Lockhart.
And Janice is not here? Okay. And we're going to do a pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which determines one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And as I do with all my council meetings, any veteran, please stay standing. Thank you for your sacrifices and our freedom. Do we have any announcements? Our next meeting is actually going to be tomorrow morning, right here at 9:00 AM. Okay, we're going to do public comment. Those wishing to address the council on the agenda may do so. You will be given three minutes during this meeting. Those who wish to speak, please state your name for the record. Get right here.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Isaac James. I serve as President-elect of the Pontagorda Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. I'm here today on behalf of more than 700 local businesses that rely on decisions made in this room. We are here to talk about the future of Pontagorda through the lens of our land development regulations. This is not just a technical discussion, this is a defining moment. The choices we make now will determine whether Pontagorda continues to grow or slowly becomes a place that cannot sustain itself. Let me be very clear, we all love this city. We all value its charm, its beauty, and its sense of community. That quaint and welcoming character is one of the reasons I moved here and the reason so many others did too. But holding on to charm does not mean shutting the door on opportunity. If we try to freeze Pontagorda in time, we will lose the very things we are trying to protect. Our businesses are already feeling the strain. I speak to restaurant owners who have to send staff home by 7:00 or 8:00 at night because there is no one out. I hear from employers who want to hire but cannot find anyone who can afford to live here. I hear from young professionals who love this city but cannot see a future here because the jobs, housing, and opportunities simply do not exist. If we do not attract people here, Pontagorda will slowly die out. That is not an exaggeration, that is a reality. This is why land development regulations matter so much. These rules are not just about height, parking, or zoning. They are about whether families can live here, whether businesses can invest here, whether our workforce can survive here, whether the next generation will choose Pontagorda or leave for a city that welcomes them. We need regulations that protect our charm but do not suffocate our future. We need balance, we need flexibility, we need a framework that encourages responsible growth, invites innovation, and supports the very businesses that keep this city alive. Without young professionals, without attainable housing, without job opportunities, a growing customer base, we cannot expect our local economy to stay healthy. The chamber wants Pontagorda to be a destination, not a place that shuts down early because there is no one left to serve. We want a city that honors its past while building a strong future. But we all should agree that stagnation or status quo cannot and must not be the plan. The Pontagorda Chamber is ready to work hand-in-hand with the city to craft regulations that keep Pontagorda charming but also competitive, thriving, and alive. This is our moment to choose the future we want. Let us choose one that lasts for generations. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kaye Abs and I'm the government liaison for the Pontagorda Isle Civic Association. We are an association of 3,300 members who live and own property here in Pontagorda. And we have a very vested interest in what goes on in the future of the community and we would love to work with you all and make that happen and help you get the word out to as many residents as possible and get input from as many residents as possible. Thank you very much, and thank you very much for having this open house and getting input from the public.
Anyone else?
As we set the stage for this evening, I just want to let the public know that our city council tonight will be here in a listening capacity. They're not going to be sharing their own opinions and necessarily engaging in soliciting additional feedback, but they're going to listen to the feedback that's being presented by you, our residents, and our business owners. And they will have formal discussions at a later date on a city council agenda where they will make the difficult decisions. But for tonight, this is a listening session and they're here to listen to all of you. And I'll turn it over to Boyd at this point.
Good evening, Boyd Lawrence, Planning Director, Urban Design Department. And I just have a brief introduction as mentioned as our kickoff meeting as we look to update our land development regulations, bring in compliance with the Conferential Plan while meeting the expectations of the council and the public. We're fortunate to have two regional planning councils of the state helping us this evening. We have Jennifer Cota Salisbury from the Central Florida Regional Planning Council. She'll be conducting some presentations shortly after I'm done here. And then we have Rebecca Harp from the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council. And her staff are here. We'll probably introduce them later, I don't have all those names. And of course, we have from Urban Design, Rachel, Hank, Daniella, and Adriana, and myself. So we'll have plenty of staff here to support the public. That's all I had, I'll let Jennifer step up. Thank you.
I'm really short, so I'm going to move the board. You can sit near me for a little bit. All right, well, thank you for the introduction. And as Boyd said, I'm Jennifer Cota Salisbury. I'm with the Central Florida Regional Planning Council. And also here is Rebecca Harp from the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council and our teams. You'll meet our staff as we talk tonight about looking at the future of the city of Pontagorda. And we greatly appreciate the opportunity to really be your facilitators and scribes tonight. We are here in a listening role as we talk about the future for the city. I do have a brief presentation, but then tonight, probably not advertised, is looking to you all. You all will be doing the work as we talk about the opportunities and challenges as we look at the future of the city. So first, taking a little bit of a snapshot of yesterday. And here are just some historical images of the city going back in time. And we had pulled this from a note on a marketing postcard from years ago. Improved homesites at reasonable prices in Florida's fastest-growing county. $10 down and $10 per month. Utilities, city water, close to shopping, schools, and churches. Wow, that's, who cannot turn that down? It was working. Well, while we're waiting for that to come back up, tonight, we will be talking together about the future and just kind of continuing on on a little bit of a snapshot of that history. Certainly an appealing area, and we'd like to talk to you all as we go into our breakout groups about what brought you here and what keeps you here. And then just one more snapshot, looking at Pontagorda's downtown in 1926. And here's a question by raise of hands, which will set our staff straight tonight. How many folks say Pontagorda? Oh, boy, and how many say Punta Gorda? Okay, so either way, we can't go wrong. And then this is a snapshot of the historic hotel, Hotel Pontagorda. And then, as we look at today, certainly a lot of changes over time. And today, the city is 32 square miles. About half of that is uplands and about half is water. That being said, at such a beautiful location, at the mouth of the Peace River and Charlotte Harbor. But certainly, as you look at resiliency, I know you have faced challenges in the past in looking at that resilient path forward. But also, 40 minutes to Fort Myers, an hour to Sarasota, and another hour and a half to Tampa. So guessing maybe location can be a great, great aspect. So as we look at the changes that the city has seen, kind of looking at 10-year blocks, starting in the year 2000 to 2010, the city grew in population about 16%. And then from 2010 to 2020, another 17%. And then as we've looked at kind of that time from the year 2000 to 2025, the city has really grown by about 42.5%. And when we look at how much of the city's population is a part of Charlotte County, today, about 9.2%. So the county is growing and the city is growing. And just, sorry, briefly, as we look at the population for 2025, the city comes in at about 20,446 and right now, projected at about 26,000 by the year 2050. And of course, that all depends on what we see with growth and future development. Just looking at some demographics in the city, the median age is 66.5 and 54% of folks are over the age of 65. And 67% of households have one or more people over the age of 65. And then as we look at education, no high school diploma is about 5%, but the majority of the population, high school graduates or college degrees as well. So just kind of a snapshot. 96% are higher with a high school degree or higher. With regard to employment, about 33% in the labor force and guessing a lot of folks have moved on to that chapter of retirement. And as we look at employment and commuting, one of our breakout groups is going to talk about transportation. But we do have folks who do telecommute or work from home, but the majority folks really do continue to drive alone to their place of employment. And that travel time is almost 30 minutes. And as we really take a look at what's coming into the city and leaving the city daily, we have almost 8,000 folks coming into the city for employment, guessing because you're the county seat is part of that. And then about 4,500 of folks leaving for employment outside of the city. And then, of course, there are folks who also live and work in the city. When we look at top percentage of employees by industry, education services, healthcare, and social assistance really is kind of that top employment block. And then that runs closely with retail trade and professional and management services is that bigger second block. So just kind of a little bit of a snapshot of the city as we have conversations. The median household income is about $79,000. The per capita personal income's about $55,000. So again, just kind of a snapshot, 9% of folks below the poverty line. And when we look at housing and we look at occupancy, most of the units in the city are owner-occupied. Looking at that snapshot, and then housing unit occupancy, the majority of housing is occupied and not vacant. And as we look at the values of homes, most of the owner-occupied housing is valued at over $500,000 and the median value of owner-occupied is about $482,000. And that's according to the American Community Survey through U.S. Census. Just kind of a snapshot. And then when we look at housing types, which we'll also talk about tonight, the majority of the housing in the city is single-family, mostly single-family detached, followed by multifamily, and then mobile homes. And when we go into our breakout groups, we'll also talk about future land use. And that really is the maximum potential that somebody could develop their property. That's what we call an umbrella. So when you hear the comprehensive plan and future land use, that's that umbrella of the maximum potential of the property. So if I have low-density residential on my property, I would be allowed to develop that with residential uses. The land development code, which we'll talk about tonight, those regulations tell me where I can put my home, where I could put my shed, or if I have multifamily development, how much parking and landscaping I'll need. So you have your umbrella and then where the rubber meets the road with your land development regulations. So tonight, I know you have a lot of pieces in place in the city, but we'd really like to talk about that path forward. And we just can't do that without talking and really getting your feedback. So I love this image, together, you reach a unified direction. So as part of the conversations tonight, those two documents, that umbrella, comprehensive plan, and the land development regulations really focus on my home, my business, and my community. And when we talk about my home and the neighborhoods in the community, we talk about density, lot sizes, and really where the opportunities are. And then we also, the land development regulations specifically look at non-conformities and structures. So you may have a neighborhood that somebody may have a repair shop operating in a residential area, and that may just have happened prior to zoning. But over time, that non-conformity will go away. And another example of what the land development regulations provide is buffering. And these are some extreme examples, but things that we work to prevent. Where you're not going to have that roller coaster in your backyard, yes, that one. Or where you, you know, have other uses that you may think, wow, let's not see that again. Let's work together to have a code that prevents these things. And then my business, really, the land development code regulations, they, you know, really facilitate what you're allowed to have, the type of use. So if I have an industrial land use and zoning, my use may be more intense. If I would like to have a planning office, then I would be looking more at kind of a neighborhood commercial type of zoning, which will also tell me how far I have to be from the road, how much parking I need, and then also kind of collecting that rainwater on my property before discharging it off-site. But also landscaping and buffering as well. And in my business, as you know, if you've looked at the land development regulations, it's like, my goodness, there's a lot of zoning districts here. Where do I fit? Where does my use fit? And all that is provided in the land development regulations. And then overall, my community. All of this comes together in the community and also as we look at implementation of these codes as an example to reach that more resilient future. And on that note, we know you all in the community have been through a lot. And these are some snapshots. And in one of our breakout groups, we'll also talk about resiliency and how the city has built back and what is that path forward as well. So before we go into the breakout groups, that's a little bit of information. But as we talk tonight, we'd like to have this as our kickoff workshop, but to hear from all of you, as we talk about all of these instruments, the comprehensive plan again is our umbrella, and then we have a code of ordinances and land development code. But to get your feedback overall about the community and where you see opportunities and challenges tonight as we work together on any possible revisions in the future. So tonight, we'd like to talk about housing and land use, transportation, economy, and resiliency. And tonight, there will be a facilitator at each of the tables. So for folks who are not at a table, if you would be willing to pull up a chair, each group will talk about the same topics for 15 to 20 minutes each. So we can get each group's feedback. And then each group will nominate a designated speaker to report out on what you would like to share with the overall group. And if our facilitators could go to their tables, I will introduce you to the teams who will be seeking your feedback tonight. Brenda, Brenda, her group, and she'll be facilitating and rotating to each group, will be talking about economic development, but also the linkages and community linkages as well. Mary Beth Soderstrom from our staff will be talking about transportation. Rebecca Harp from Southwest will be talking about housing and land use. And Curtis Knowles will be talking with Esma from Southwest about resiliency. So on that note, I'll stand for any questions and then we'll start with our breakout group discussion and then come back for report outs.
Mayor, would you be willing to recess this meeting and reconvene it at a later time?
Yes, so the meeting is not recessed.
If you need help moving chairs up to a table, I'm coming your way.
And is it appropriate, please?
I'm wondering.
I'm wondering.
Can you state your name too, please?
No, that's all right. Okay, hello.
State your name.
My name is Carlton Hughes. Our group talked a bunch about infrastructure. We spent a bunch of time on that. There were some concerns about aging infrastructure downtown and not keeping up with growth. That was kind of a reoccurring theme. We talked a little bit about the RO plant, the cost to initially build that plant, and then the ongoing maintenance costs, which are a big cost for a little city. We talked about sewer and septic. Charlotte Park was kind of a hot topic. We talked about runoff and stormwater issues. So a lot of environmental issues woven through the entire discussion, I would say. Downtown flooding. We talked about how the newer houses are flooding out the ones next to them. So those were more issues, not really anything that we had solutions for, obviously. We talked about hurricane recovery, and there seemed to be a sentiment that most folks were sort of disappointed with how our town was able to recover from these three recent storms, acknowledging what a big hit they actually were. Waiting for FEMA. Some folks felt like they would have rather have seen the city undertake repairs and get reimbursed from FEMA rather than sitting around waiting. So then we talked a little bit about vision for the future. What would Punta Gorda look like? What would we like it to look like 10 years from now? I think there was a big sentiment that our commercial to residential tax base was off. No one really had an answer for how the city could encourage commercial growth. I think we had some differing opinions on that, but definitely a consistent theme through the discussion was that we don't have a shared vision of what we want this town to be or how to get there. So that is the first thing we need to figure out. What do we want to do? And then we can figure out how to do it. I guess that's it. Then we talked about recreation and what was the other one? Transportation a little bit, but I don't have any notes on that.
Thank you.
Well, our group talked about a lot of things. One thing we did talk about is why.
Your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Frank Conti. We talked about why we love Punta Gorda. A lot of people share the same interests, close to the water, downtown, easy to navigate, lovely sunsets, boating in the backyard. Opportunities. There are business shops and restaurants, although we did want to see some more businesses, shops, and restaurants come into the community. We discussed a number of ways where that could possibly happen. We discussed difficult developing in the floodplain. The entire city is in a floodplain. A lot of people that want to come in are hesitant to start a business in the city if they know that they're in a flood elevation. First of all, insurance is up on that. If they're getting financing on it, this is going to certainly affect their financing. So it's difficult to develop in the city. But we did talk about other developments that are outside the city and outside the floodplain elevations. We had in the last five years, I'm going to say four hurricanes, major hurricanes. One gentleman brought up the fact that it takes, what is it, seven years to recover from a hurricane? So we didn't have a lot of breathing room to repair from one hurricane before another one came, and another one came, and another one came. The city has done a great job trying to take care of the damage from these various hurricanes. We did focus on the fact that we believe some of the areas that we'd really like to see focused on is the Harbor Walk. We think that's a great asset to the city, and we invite people to come into the city, especially if we want to encourage economic development. We talked about starting an Economic Development Committee. If we bring them in, we want to walk them through our best places in the city. We are still undergoing a lot of repairs on the Harbor Walk, but if this is our jewel and the harbor is our jewel, we need to make sure that when we take them for that walk that we've got a smile on our face as much as they've got a smile on theirs. We talked about the environment. We talked about the harbor. We talked about the fact that right now Charlotte Harbor is an endangered harbor. There were times where, and not too long ago, there were horseshoe crabs that lived in the harbor. It was full of seagrass. The seagrass is gone. The horseshoe crabs are gone. If we want to consider ourselves to be an environmentally friendly community and a community where people can come and see the harvesting of oysters and see other aquaculture and take advantage of what we have in our community, this is something we need to focus on. A lot of the problems that we do have in the harbor is the fact that we're basically the dumping ground for everything that comes up north. So even though legislation-wise we can pass things in the city, outside of our county, outside of our city, we don't have those regulations. So it would be a good idea to try to talk with partners further up north to see how we can prevent problems, maybe the same problems that they have, from coming in and affecting the city of Punta Gorda. There were questions about the quality of the water system and the sewage system that was brought up. We can't speak for answers on that. We do know, obviously, if the water's been tested and, obviously, if there is a danger of drinking the water, then we're going to be told. We are concerned. We were concerned about the fact that when we have these tidal surges and we have flooding, that we've got sewage that is in the city. Is it mixing in with something else that really shouldn't be? Is it getting into our drinking water? Questions we're asking, but not answers. We don't have answers. But we do know also that, we talked about the fact that there are a tremendous amount of developments that are going on in the city right now. In the next five years, the growth that we see in Burt's Hill Road over on Jones Loop Road, there are 7,000, did you say, roughly? Roughly 7,000 homes that are going to be built within the next five?
Residents.
Residents, within the next five years. That's a tremendous amount of addition to the community. We've got to be prepared for it, which means that we need to pay for the infrastructure of it. I also understand that the impact fees that are being paid don't cover the expenses of these things being built, but it also taxes our highways, our intersections. So we're trying to think of ways to be proactive instead of being reactive. Some people have discussed certain intersections of the city, so we did have conversations The other thing we talked about was the fact that there are a lot of organizations in the city, and I think a lot of the organizations do share the same concerns, but they don't, I don't think at least, try to work cohesively because every situation or problem that we do have in the city isn't single and separate. They're all connected, and they all need to be addressed at the same time. It's a massive project. I've been in commercial construction for 45 years, and I've been involved in huge commercial projects, and as though you might drive by and it looks like organized chaos, it looks like nobody knows what's going on, when you see that all the players have a place, they know their work, and everyone's working, hundreds of people are working together, and you see a project come together, it's no different than what Punta Gorda needs to do. We've got to work as a community. I don't think we should be groups of people that, we have to agree to disagree, but at the same time, we've got to all come together, and every one of these concerns that we have have to be brought up and built up at the same time. I think that's what's going to make the community successful. Let me just check my notes to make sure I didn't miss anything. Oh, yeah. We also talked about the fact that we have an airport four miles from the city of Punta Gorda, and I think it's an unutilized asset. It's got a way of funneling in people from all over the country to come in here. An Economic Development Committee should be advertising right now. I have a house in New York. There was no school today. There's a snowstorm up there. There should be advertisements on TV up there about the fact that it's 77 degrees and sunny, and I'm sipping a pina colada over here and watching the sunset. But these are things that get people going, get people interested. Now, we can do economic development, but at the same time, we've got to make sure the Harbor Walk is working, and we've got to make sure that the lights are taken care of, all the other things that need to be done. of, all the other things that need to be done. The other thing we brought up was the fact that we are a community that is an older community age-wise. We need to bring in and try to entice families that are 35 to 40 years old with two kids to come in. Again, we can bring them in, but we have to build the facilities and the services that they need because they're going to be the future of the city. If no one comes here, then another 50 years from now, let's think about what the city is going to look like. So we have to populate ourselves. We have to populate the city. So that's one way of doing it. I think that pretty much does it, but thank you very much.
State your name, please.
Rick Perry. So we started, there's a lot of redundancy, obviously, in things. Some things keep coming out, it's clear. And as we talked, there are probably four or five things that just always kept coming back to. And I'll mention them as we go through. But I think we kind of liked answering what we liked about Punta Gorda for a little while there. In fact, it took a while, but it took a while because we didn't stop. But everyone here agreed, what really came into is we liked the small-town feel. That's why we're here. It was a small-town feel. It's a community. At one point in there, someone said, you know, "How many communities do you know your postal carrier's name, right?" Well, I've known all of mine, and the others here. And with that small-town feel, we get all this access to these natural resources immediately out there. Gulf of America and the harbor and just all the things we get, and we can always come home to that small-town feel. And we liked, we liked the fact that our downtown is full of mom-and-pops, not chain stores. You know, going to, now, the mom-and-pops may actually live in Naples and own the restaurants, but they're still mom-and-pops. And we like that. We like, we like the fact that that's what we have to support us here. And the fact that there's a lot of people that know each other and have a good communication, and we think it's a unique location and the right size. We like the water access. We think marketing, access to water is a good thing for us, and we should do more of that maybe. We talked about, this came up in a couple of different places. We talked about one of the things, we really like to see, try to figure out, no answers, of course, no solutions, but how we could, how we could make our businesses get more, more people coming in in longer hours at night. You go to our restaurants, and they're having to shut down at 8 o'clock, or 7 o'clock, or 9 o'clock. You know, one of the things we talked about is, you know, downtown, there was something that would draw people in, like a playhouse, or a Shakespearean theater, or something that would be unique, that would draw people in, and they go to a play from 5 to 7 o'clock, and guess what they do at 7 o'clock? They're all going to go out to the, they're all going to go out to eat, and all of a sudden, you've got business at 8 o'clock at night. So talked about some ideas alike. A lot of support here for small businesses and trying to figure out how to help those businesses downtown thrive more. Some of the challenges was, how do we get growth in the city without getting high-density types of residential downtown? There's a very common theme, this table, that no one here wanted to see any higher residential downtown at all. We want to see commercial. In fact, a little bit later, we mentioned, it was brought up that our density downtown is 25. Well, some of the other cities around Naples is 12. We already have a higher density in our land development regulations, and it might be too high already. But the common theme was, we want to support our businesses. We want to try to figure out what we can get to support those businesses, but we did not want to see any higher, any residential downtown. So we talked about a problem we would have with affordable housing in the city. One of the problems we have with the city that came up again repeatedly is that the city is almost built out. If you look, you look at the city limits, except for pockets, small pockets, there are some, were built out. So we really don't have a lot of places to go that, other than for commercial activity. A lot of good commercial spots yet, if we can get the right kind of commercial. And the other big challenge is that flooding. Not, the problem when we talk about flooding is everyone thinks that we're going to do a flooding study, and that's the problem. And that's part of the problem. We have a lot of water flow that comes from rains that gather just by the nature of it, and that's, it's a bigger problem than just, hey, let's go fix some flood drains. And I think that has to be dealt with. We pointed out at one point, you know, that every business downtown is low. You know, all those blocks, Affam Downs and Talia area, all of them are so low that over time, it's probably all those buildings have to come up. But even if they did, if we don't get something fixed, even in a big rainstorm, and many of you might remember February of 2023, it was unbelievable. We just had a really bad rainstorm on a Sunday, and everything was flooded. Streets were, every business downtown was on an island. So we can build all the beautiful buildings we want, but when it rains like that, they're going to be an island. When we got to housing, we pointed out again, or we mentioned again, that the city is pretty well-built out. We think that there's a lot of pressure by some to look for higher density, and we just don't see that as part of the solution. But when we're thinking about that, and we don't see it as part of the solution, we're thinking about more downtown and historic, there are parts of Punta Gorda where development like that could fit, but there just aren't many of them because we are so well-built out. What we'd like to see is more commercial development opportunities. We'd like to see the empty space used for the right kinds of commercial opportunities. We really think these flooding issues need to be solved before we get too far down the path. Building takes a while, anyway. One of the other challenges with housing and land use, whether, there were actually two things we kept coming up with, and it comes up on the resiliency, too, is parking. When we, we already had a parking problem because over the years, our businesses, for whatever reason, didn't, we weren't, they weren't required to put in more parking. So places were put in, like Carmelo's, where their parking became the city hall. So whenever a city hall's busy or someone's using it, all of a sudden, there's no parking. And so that exists all over the downtown. We have a little underutilized parking garage. So parking, parking is a problem already that would be made worse by even, by higher density. But beyond that, the streets are a problem. We have, you know, two lanes, we have a grid, you know, two lanes going this way and two lanes that way, and that's not going to get solved. They're just like Europe. They had those little one, one little lanes, and now they got a, you know, an eight-foot path going down behind buildings that they can't move. We're not going to widen those streets, and we don't have any more capacity in those streets. And when you, and when you think about the traffic that we've already got in the streets, and then you realize that for a good part of Punta Gorda, those few streets are the hurricane exit zone. That's how they have to leave the city. So whatever we do, we can't get more crowding in the area that people rely on to get out of the town for hurricane evacuations. The other big problem that kept coming back to is the water and sewer. That we're built out, and we've just gone through and taxed through water rates and wastewater rates, increased our rates to cover $200 million over the next five years to build out water. Well, how much more capacity are we going to continue to throw into this system that we're spending $200 million to fix just to get us to where we are now? I understand that there's some capacity built into it, but how much more can we take? And then, as you mentioned over here, the burnt, along Burt's Door Road, they're putting in other development. Tucker's Grade, there's hundreds going in there. We've got some going out in Jones. Now, some of those are our properties. We have, they're in the city. The ones on Jones, they're in the city. But there's, but there's some that we're going to get forced to provide water for and/or, I'm not sure about wastewater, because we're, you know, we're tasked with supporting, I guess through state regulations. And how much more of that can we take? When we don't have control, when the county permits these things, and then we get stuck with water delivery. It's a problem for us. And so you can say we got capacity, but if we don't have control over, over what water we got to need, it's a problem. And so those are all the things I think we brought up under, under resiliency. And sewer, the wastewater just kind of fits in the same problem as the water.
All right. I think that kind of takes us forward.
Yeah.
So thank you so much. I know it sounds loud enough to the people in the room, but for the audio recording, it really is important for you to speak into the microphone over here, which is currently behind you. Thank you so much.
My name is Bill Comber. Excuse my voice. I'm getting over a cold. Our speaker tonight, designated speaker, left early, so I got voluntold. So in the interest of time, I'll keep it brief. As far as challenges, one of the big things that we talked about was trying to get some type of economic development downtown, primarily with businesses, whether that be not necessarily all commercial, but maybe mixed use to some extent, businesses downstairs, residents upstairs. In terms of getting younger people here, I know, I would hope that the city works with the Economic Development Office, because I know they do tons of studies on that, and we've heard reports, different organizations and committees that have been on, about how in the next 20 years or so, 25 years, literally, we're not going to have a workforce here if things continue, and it's not just here, it's across the country. So we need to try and get proactive, try and get those young people in here now so that we have the workforce. As far as downtown specifically, we got a little more specific with things. A reoccurring theme, City Marketplace, came up quite a bit. We'd like to see something finally happen with that. Our general consensus here was, we'd like to see some type of LDRs that are a little bit more inviting to groups, primarily investors and developers. Again, speaking with developers in the area that have spoken at various, you know, functions and committees that have been part of. A reoccurring theme is, from the developers' mouths, they don't want to work downtown with some of this because right now, the LDRs are in flux, and an investor doesn't want to come in and put all this money on the line, and then halfway through the project, find out it's not going to work. So if we could do something with the LDRs in terms of, prior to what they were, in other words, prior to when we repeal them, just, and nobody's ever going to be happy. I mean, you're going to have to make some type of sacrifices on both sides, but if we can come up with something where it's a little bit more defined, a little bit more inviting, getting back to City Marketplace, it's not just that, it's City Marketplace, it's the Save-A-Lot, it's the Celtic Ray, you know, and you hear bits and pieces, and you don't know what's the truth, what's not, what's exaggerated, et cetera. But one of the things that we hear quite a bit when we're out, again, at chamber functions or committee meetings and so forth, is the city not necessarily being that open to working with people. Like, for example, the Celtic Ray, you know, trying to make somebody like Save-A-Lot, spend I don't know how much, tens of thousands of dollars to grass a lot. We talked about parks. We don't want parks. I think it was brought up. We have roughly 35 miles, square miles here, about half of which, which I just found out tonight for the first time, is actually water. I didn't even know we had water in the city limits. But if you figure that, at roughly 15 square miles, 18 parks, we don't feel like we want to park downtown in the middle of Punta Gorda. We'd rather have something useful. I don't even live in the city limits. I had a business here for 30 years. I recently moved out because I lost literally everything with the flooding last year. But my contention would be, you know, we talk about, when city council, every year, talk about, you know, try not to raise taxes for homeowners and so forth. Well, if there's an empty lot sitting downtown, or there's a development downtown that's bringing in tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of taxable revenue, to us it would make sense, why not create something like that? If not, the taxes are going to have to come from somewhere. I mean, it's simple third, fourth grade mathematics. There's X number of dollars we need to have it paid for, whether we're going to pay for it as you all taxpayers living in the city, or a business there that's thriving, bringing in, you know, dollars into the area and paying tax revenue. That was kind of our reoccurring thing. I know, and I give you credit to the different groups because some of you went way specific into a lot more areas than we did. We kind of kept gravitating back to the same things, but that was really the gist of it. The whole tax base with, you know, trying to balance it somewhat between commercial and residential, we felt was important, not to burden one or the other. And again, getting back to, I think, a great resource is the EDO office. I mean, I've heard firsthand countless reports from them about studies that they do in the area, and this isn't their opinions, this is money that they've spent on surveys and so forth to go out and see what the area needs, how they can help businesses. And, I mean, if, if the city can contact them and work with them, that's a, you know, a resource that's at their disposal that's free. So I do a decent job. I think we kind of summed it up in a nut. I'm sorry? No, I'm not getting to Sugar Bean Coke. Some of the things which I think have, maybe have been covered in the past, but, for example, car washes, storage facilities, things like that, somehow figuring in so that the city has some type of, you have to get some type of authority from the city before we start doing things like that, so that we can get the proper businesses in. We don't just want business, we want the right businesses in there. One of the other things we talked about with businesses, we'd like it to, and the example used was Northport, but we'd like it to look, look nice. In other words, you know, you drive through Charlotte County, and it's weeds in the median, and it's just box front, box front, box front. You hit the line at Northport going into Welland Park area, and I understand it's a newer area, but it's beautiful. You know, they have different dimensional buildings, different color buildings, things of that nature. So that's something that I think should be, we think should be considered also with the LDRs. Got it all covered? I think that's it. Thank you for your time.
I just had a couple of comments before we turn it back to city council, if that's okay. Just wanted to thank you all so much. This is a foundational workshop to bring the community This is a foundational workshop to bring the community together. We were your scribes tonight and we greatly appreciate that honor. We actually will be putting this, this all to paper, but it definitely helps as we look at a path forward. We will be looking at, coordinating with the city on the next workshop in early 2026. So, oh my goodness, that's not that far away. But looking at probably mid-January to early February to come back together. But also with this effort, folks that you think should be in the room that aren't, if you would let them know. Also, thank you for doing a lot of paperwork tonight. In addition to providing feedback, there were a number of surveys that, that you all completed. If you have them yet, if you leave them on your table, but also we had a question if folks would like to take more time to complete them. When you signed in, there's an agenda. It has Rachel Berry's email on it. If you would be willing to email her the survey, if you don't complete it tonight, that would be wonderful. And thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else have anything here? Thank you so much for coming here tonight. Meeting's adjourned.